Employer contributions. I wanted to acknowledge some guests that are in the council chambers tonight. For one, we have Ross Standforth with our investment consulting group. He's our investment consultant for the police pension fund for many years. And we may have some pension board trustees trickling in behind me. Can't see them, but they are always invited to attend this session because your role in the health of our pension funds is very important. So, just to kind of set the stage before I turn this over to Heath Murlock of NyHart Consulting, who are the, is the city's actuarial consultant. Our process to get here tonight begins right after the first of the year when our accounting team sends off all kinds of information to NyHart. Information from our investment consultants from both the police and fire pension fund regarding how the investments performed over the year. And 2018 was not a good one, but also a lot of data on both the police and fire pension funds as it relates to the participants of the fund. So that includes all of our active members, our employees of the police and fire departments, and of course, all of the pensioners that, that we are processing their monthly payroll every month. So, we provide all kinds of data about how much our active participants are making, how long they've been here, how old they are, are they married? And how, how much they've contributed to the fund in addition to our retirees, their age, that kind of information, what salary they went out on, and where they're headed and their pension, pension payments to them. So with that, we get two reports. One is the one that's used for our audit. That is, we often refer to that as GASB reporting, GASB sixty-seven and sixty-eight. Jamie was just telling us about that our last meeting. That's the one report. And then, the other report is our evaluation. And that's what we're talking about tonight as we work towards creating that valuation and what our contributions will be next. It's really important, this next step. One, rating agencies look at our pension funding and investment results as a measure of the health of the city. And so, we want to make sure that we're reporting that we're healthy. And this also is a huge piece into the budget that we're all working on for the 2020 budget. So, what will our pension contributions be next year? So, we have thirty minutes tonight, so now probably about twenty-seven minutes. Next up after tonight is that on July twenty-second, our next meeting, I will put forth a report with recommendations for what the employer contributions and our assumptions should be for the 2020 budget. So with that, I will turn it over to Heath.
Thank you, Stephanie. So, we have a short piece that we'll go through that will really focus on the assumptions first, and then the results for each, for both the firefighters and the police plan. Flip in here. So, as Stephanie mentioned, each year we go through, we do the evaluation just once a year. And at the end of 2018, the, the stock market just didn't behave very well. So, for a lot of pension funds, two thousand, two thousand and nineteen results ended up being a little bit worse than what most folks thought just because of what we saw in that downturn. The interesting point with that, though, if you would do the measurement two months later or three months later, you get a drastically different picture. Because whatever the markets gave, gave away in the, in the last quarter of eighteen, they picked up most of that in the first quarter of nineteen. Real quick before we get into that, just a legislative update. Earlier this year, there was a lot of bills that were introduced in committees. This information is somewhat stale now, except it's my understanding, none of these made it out of the committees. But there was a lot of discussion around basically trying to consolidate fire and police plans. Maybe combine them with IMRF, or create separate plans for police and fire. All of these that are listed up there, except for the very last one, wouldn't have really changed the cost at all for these programs. It was more about just consolidating these and I think trying to maybe make a more efficient vehicle of having all the assets in one spot potentially. The last one would, would have a cost impact in terms of, right now, we're targeting to fund to ninety percent by 2040. And the one bill had to extend that from 2040 to 2050, and then also maybe even lower the ninety percent down to eighty percent. That would have had a significant impact for, for most cities. As I said, none of these made it out of the, made it out of their committees. And I haven't heard of anything here recently on any new bills. So first, just real quick on the assumption updates. A couple of years ago, 2017, we went through, we looked, looked at all the assumptions for the pension funds, went through and selected what we thought were the best assumptions through that process. Two assumptions that were identified to look at and gradually step down. The first one is the interest rate assumption. So, you know, what do we think that the assets are going to earn over the long, over the long term? The assumption part of the assumption study was seven point five percent. That's been lowered ten basis points, to the point where we'd be at seven point two percent for this year. The other assumption is the payroll growth assumption. Where that assumption gets used in our valuation is when you compare your liabilities in the fund to the assets, that's the difference is the unfunded accrued liability, and that gets amortized. And for public pension plans, it's very common to amortize that as a level percentage of pay, the thinking that is you want to keep it at, that cost level as a percentage of your payroll. So with that, so what, what does that really mean when we do the calculation? What it really means is when we boil it down is we figure out what that amortization cost is this year, and let's say we're at a three point eight percent payroll growth assumption, that amount would grow by three point eight percent next year. So, we're assuming the payroll is growing that, by that much. So, what, that started at four percent. We're ratcheting that down by ten basis points a year as well, so for this year, it would be at three point eight percent. Here, you can see on the page, the Illinois Department of Insurance does issue an assumption study about every five years. If you were using their assumptions, you would be using it, for the interest rate, you'd be at six point five percent. Prior to that study, they were using six point seven five. And for the payroll growth assumption, it would be at three point five. So, we have cut some numbers that we'll be able to walk through to show you what that impact is. And then, the last thing on this page, Stephanie asked the question, I think it was probably towards the latter part of 2018, in terms of, are there different ways that we can, you know, approach this unfunded accrued liability in terms of how we amortize it? And the answer is, yes, there is. There's a lot of different ways you can do this. One approach that some, some cities are looking at is to do a level dollar amortization. So essentially, that's similar to you going out and getting your mortgage, and you're going to get a thirty-year mortgage, you're going to pay that same amount over the thirty year time period. In the end, what does that mean? It means you pay more now, and you're going to pay less later. And we have a graph here and a few slides to demonstrate what that looks like. Alright, so the first page here is for the firefighters. We show a lot of numbers here. We do have a 2018 column, is more here for, just for reference. And then, we have under 2019, the different valuations that we've ran so far. I, I think the easiest thing to focus on here for this page is, if you look at that funded percentage, that's where it tells a good story just as we walk across that page. First off, so for 2018, when we look at the assets compared to the liability, the funded ratio for the firefighters' fund was thirty-two point four percent. If we go over one column, so this is now at one-one, 2019, we're using all the same assumptions. We did collect new participant data, and we have new asset information. So you can see from one-one eighteen to one-one nineteen, we see the funded ratio decreased a little bit, went down to thirty-one point seven percent. A lot of that is due to the asset performance. Last year, we were assuming seven point three percent, the fund earned closer to like minus four. That's, you know, 2018 was a very difficult year for most of my clients. They fell in the minus two to minus six percent range. So, very comparable to what I see with my other clients. If we go one more column over, we call this COLA coding refinement. Basically, the COLA that's associated with these plans are, is fairly complex, and our software provider was able to basically provide us a way to put a better estimate on it. And so, that was some good news because the liability actually came down with us, with this better estimate. So there you can see the funded ratio is at thirty-two point five percent. And then, we go to the next column over, this is where we update the, the assumptions for the interest rate and the payroll growth assumption. And here, you can see we end up at thirty-two point one percent. So, from a funded ratio perspective, basically held, held steady, and, and we moved a couple assumptions downward during that process. If you look down at the bottom section of, of this page, then, it goes through the, the contribution calculation. So, the contribution calculation, so this is the recommended contribution that we provide in this funding report. And the, the key components to this is the normal cost, that's the cost of benefits accruing for the year, and then the amortization of that unfunded accrued liability. So maybe if we just pick that same, same assumptions as 2018 column, you can see that the total normal cost was roughly nine hundred thousand dollars for 2019. The employee contributions are covering about four hundred and thirty thousand of that. And then, the unfunded accrued amorti, the unfunded accrued liability, the amortization for that is coming in at two point seven, almost two point eight million. And essentially, what's happening is we're taking that fifty-one point nine, fifty-one point nine million dollar number, and we're amortizing that over roughly twenty-two years to have that paid off by, by 2040. There's some interest in terms of just when that contribution is going to be paid, and that gets us, has us coming right at three point five million compared to last year at three point three. Now, if we skip over to the, the interest rate at seven point two and, and the payroll growth at three point eight percent, this is if we continue to follow that path of lowering those, that interest rate down, you know, that, that gets us to a, a contribution of the three point four four million. So roughly a hundred and fifty thousand dollar increase over last year's recommended contribution. Now, if you wanted to go to a level dollar amortization, that's what's that, that far right column is. You can see all your liabilities and assets are the same, it's just that, how you're going to amortize that unfunded accrued liability. You can see that, that, just that component in itself jumped up by a million dollars. But once again, that would be a level dollar amount versus that two point seven million we know is expected to increase by three point eight percent. So, a, a very similar story then when we look at the police fund. We had the same things that are happening in terms of the funded ratio, last year was at forty-one point two percent. And if we use all the same assumptions, you know, what do we end up at this year? We're at the forty point five percent. Once again, one, the, the main reason we saw a little bit of step backwards is because of the asset performance. For this one here, I'll just jump down to the, the contributions. You can see for underneath the seven point two percent and three point eight percent scenario, we're seeing a contribution of three point seven seven million. So that's about two hundred and twenty-nine thousand higher than what the amount was last year.
Question?
Yes.
So, for the level dollar amortization, total recommended contribution, do you have, maybe this is a better question for Stephanie, I'm not sure who, but do we have an estimated total recommended contribution in ten years or something like that? The question being, what I'm getting at ultimately is while, right now, four point set, I'm using the police, right now, four point seven million is the total recommended contribution for you doing the level dollar amortization is obviously higher than the three point six for the next year's with the seven point two interest rate. Would that number be lower than what we predict, you know, we predicted to be in ten years from now? Like, the idea basically of paying more now and saving more later, do we have an estimate number for that? Okay.
Yes. So, in, in theory, yes, I think the more you pay today, we'll lower that number in the future. Now, this, the one key assumption there is, we have to hit all the assumptions. So, for example, let's say you say, you know, we, we want to do the level dollar amount, so we're, we're going to be showing this three point, I'm looking at police now, yeah, three point nine million dollar contribution. That would be steady as long as we, we hit all the assumptions, and plus, we didn't change any assumptions. But I think the thought is that we will continue to probably lower that interest rate assumption, so there would always be a little bit of pressure upward on that. I went through both those pages pretty quickly. Any, any other questions on just the results that we're seeing?
Why are municipal investments doing so poorly in the stock market? Do we know why?
December.
Just in December, I guess.
December.
If a quarter one bounced back up is what you're saying.
Yeah, that's what we're seeing with all my clients. I mean, that's not my area of expertise, but for all my clients, I think the best return I've seen for 2018 was minus one point five, and the worst return I've seen was minus twenty. But the vast majority were in that, that two to six percent, minus two to, minus six percent range.
It's all a matter of where it's invested also, whether it's fixed income, or whether it's equities, or whatever it is, can make a difference.
And we can always call Ross up to, you know, give you some guidance too, but there are state statutes that govern what pension funds can invest in. And the amount that we can invest in equities is limited in total of the investments. In addition, there's limitations in types of equities that we could invest in, and the total percentage in any one equity. So, we can't just put fifty-five percent of our equity in Apple, you know, knowing that the next big iPhone's coming out. So, it does limit the results in that we do have to be thinking about the long-term future of the health of the pension fund and not so much chasing yield.
Right. I know that, I mean, the second slide was legislative updates. Does anybody know if there's any legislative interests at the state level to change what we are limited to invest in? I know that there's lots of talk about consolidating and things like that, but...
Yes, there is.
Yeah? Okay. That's all.
I guess one thing I forgot to mention on the recommended contribution, of the funding policy that the city selected a couple of years ago was to fund to ninety percent of the crew liability, which is basically following the state statute. Prior, prior to 2017, it was funding towards the hundred percent. This next page then just tries to highlight this amortization technique and what, what this amount would look like. So what we've done in this graph is we've combined both police and fire, the amortization pieces together, and we looked at a, three different scenarios. One, the, you know, keeping the salary growth or the payroll growth assumption at three point eight percent. What happens if you went to one point nine percent, or what happens if you went to zero percent? And the zero percent is basically a level dollar approach. So you can see that the gray bar represents the level dollar approach, and that's, that's coming in right at, call it roughly seven point six million dollars for both funds, whereas the level percentage of pay right now is coming in at five and a half million. But as you can see, as you go out through this projection period, it's about year nine or ten, when all of a sudden that, that, the current approach was in a, it will exceed and get higher than the, the seven point six percent, or seven point six million dollar And once again, the, the approach that you're using today is a very common approach for public pension plans in terms of trying to really assign a cost as a level percentage of pay. The thinking behind that, or theory behind that is you want to be paying a, a level percentage of pay for, throughout the person's career with the city.
And I imagine a lot of municipalities are hesitant at switching to a level dollar because who knows if the state is going to change the legislative and consolidate all the pensions, and now we've bonded to, to pay upfront a lot of money, and now all of that's been consolidated.
Um, yeah, I think, I think it really comes down to what's, what's available in the budget and what flexibility they have. I do work with a number of entities where they might say, let's, let's produce one calculation that maybe would be a level dollar. And so, okay, that's the top end that we want to fund to. What's our minimum? And then, depending from budget to budget, what do we actually put into the funds? So, there, there is flexibility there in terms of how you want to, I'll say, tackle the issue. I mean, you have the one approach, which is just following the state statute minimum, which is essentially what you're doing today, and gradually get there. If there was an extra budget, then you could say, well, let's attack this a little bit differently, or there's a different funding policy that we could choose to go to. This next graph then just shows how the unfunded accrued liability gets paid down for the, for both programs. You can just sort of see that, you know, the gray bar, the gray line now is just, it's going to be a little bit lower throughout that time period. All three of them are going to get you this, there at the same time, it's just a matter of pay more now or pay less now. Page nine just provides a quick stats for the folks that are in the, in the, in the fund. So, for the firefighters, we have fifty-eight active participants in the fund, and for the police, we're at, rated eighty. Both populations have been very steady over the last five or six years. And then, for the top bar chart, you can see the non-active participants, so these are mainly your retirees and beneficiaries. Once again, fairly steady, you know, that's going to gradually grow as you get more folks entering into retirement. Page ten then just gives you a quick snapshot of, of the asset information. And so, at the top, we have the firefighters. The market value in the trust when we did the evaluation was at twenty-two point three million versus the actual value of assets. So, when we determine this recommended contribution, we're smoothing asset gains and losses over a five-year time period. One thing to keep in mind is, when we do that smoothing, we're comparing that to the assumption that we're using. So, for example, this most recent year, we're, we're assuming seven point three percent. We actually returned minus three point nine, so my asset loss essentially for that year is three point nine plus the seven point three. That whole amount gets spread over the, over the five-year time period. For, the other thing I always look at when I look at this type of page is the actual value is higher than the market value right now. That's essentially telling us that there's some asset losses that have, that have yet to smooth through the, the calculation process. The thought behind that is, you know, we're going to have some down years like 2018, hopefully in, you know, we have some good years, and like, for example, in 2019, that's going to help offset that. And it helps, you know, limit the volatility that you'll see in that recommended contribution from year to year. And then, at the bottom of this page, you can see, you know, we see a similar relationship on the market value to actual value for the police plan, thirty-four point eight million versus thirty-eight, thirty-eight million. And, and that return was, it might come in at minus four point five percent. The last thing, just to hit on real quick, is just that we do produce two different valuations. One is for the recommended contribution that we really just walked through today. The other one is for GASB. They use different assumptions, different asset values, so you will see some differences between that funding report versus the GASB report. And page twelve just really summarizes what the differences that we're seeing there. So, for the funding evaluation for firefighters, when we look at all those numbers, at that seven point two percent assumption, we're at thirty-two point one percent funded status versus under GASB reporting, we're at twenty-eight point six percent. And then, somewhere for police, we're at forty point nine versus thirty-six point five So, that was the end of my presentation. I don't know if there's any, any other questions?
I don't know if we're going to get to it. Is the recommendation, or I'm not sure we talked about that at this point, but recommendation to keep the, in interest rate, if that's seven point two or whatever?
Yeah, the recommendation would be to move it, because last year, we were at seven point three percent, so we'd be, to go down to the seven point two percent. So, in, in both, both pages here, we'd be looking at the, the column that's labeled interest rate is the seven point two and payroll growth at three point eight percent. The level dollar amortization was shown more just for informational purposes.
We felt comfortable, I mean, thinking that's, you can't predict the crystal ball of predicting, you know, what the, what, yeah, how many, much you're going to make in the market, except for, seven point two seems a little, still a little high, I guess, to me, but...
Um, yeah, I think in general, what we're seeing, the trends across the US, is that that assumption is coming down. So, one stat I always look to is for the one hundred and thirty largest statewide programs across the country. Back in 2008, I think that average return assumption was seven point nine percent. Today, that's seven point three four percent. And we, we continue to see that drop a little bit. So, I, I think what you're doing, you know, in a gradual way is, is the right direction. I think from a budgetary standpoint, if you said you could go at a faster pace, I think that's better. But I think, when you think about this, this retirement plan, these pension plans, they're very long-term vehicles. We have a very long time horizon. And so, if it takes us a couple of extra years to get to, you know, to what, to the assumption that we think makes the most sense, I'm not going to lose too much sleep over
Thanks, Heath. And if I were just to add a little bit to that, so in the agenda packet that was included and attached to the agenda, on the first page was a history of the police and fire contributions that we funded through the property tax levy, so you can see that over time. The next attachment before Heath's presentation was last year's report that was approved by council, and I think it was the end of June. And that is a document that's been updated each of the last three years. I think we started in seventeen, eighteen was year two. And then, so you would see a similar document on July twenty-second, just updated for the incremental changes that we're making, trying to get those, to those assumptions. And that's just, you know, trying to ease the, the burden on the property taxpayers. So, as it stands right now, that third column, that impact of, on next year's general fund budget is about a half a million dollars. And, you know, I will be making my recommendations at that next meeting. In an ideal world, we would just fund level amortization, and level dollar amortization next year, and do that going forward. You know, like we pay our mortgages, but that would be a, you know, really big impact on the taxpayers. Any other questions?
Regarding the level dollar strategy, have you seen, do most places, if anybody's doing this, do they bond to get to the point and then just coast from there? Or do they raise property taxes or whatever to get to that point? What, what are most places doing?
I can't answer that with a lot of expertise as far as saying which communities might be doing what, but I can tell you generally, my, my instinct is that there are not a lot of communities funding to the level dollar. Those that are, it probably a mix between pension obligation bonds or being able to fund it out of their current reserves.
You don't have a crystal ball, but...
I don't.
Would, you know, my thought is if we were to do some sort of bonding strategy to get to that level dollar, that would impact our credit rating, obviously. But would the offsetness of not having that continual ramp up that, who knows if we're going to be able to meet in the future, would that sort of offset the concerns about our credit rating by taking more bonding on, by having a consistent and predictable amount owed?
So, last fall, Randy and I did meet with our financial advisor from Spear Financial, Anthony Misselli, and, and bear the underwriters to get more information on pension obligation bonds. My memory is short, and I can pretty much only remember yesterday. But, what I do remember is that, one, you're just replacing one liability with another. So, from the rating agency standpoint and reviewing our credit, that's pretty much status quo. You're just replacing one liability with another. But there's inherent risk in, in issuing pension obligation bonds, and that there you are hoping to make more money, you know, than what the market would bear. So, there's some risk that you have to consider as well. And then, of course, you know, having more debt service in which, you know, that picture on our financial statements is significant too.
Right.
But it's something to consider.
Yeah, clearly, I mean, just from that graph, we're going to be paying more long-term by continuing the same strategy, but we don't have the capital to do it the other way.
So, each year, when this next step, Heath, after our July twenty-second meeting and the recommendations are approved, and we give him guidance on, on what the evaluation, final evaluation report should be, he will update that report, and then also provide, based on our current assumptions and all things being equal, as much as you can, he will project out the contributions through 2041, you know, twenty forty plus a year. And I do take that information and make my little spreadsheet because we have been funding it with property tax. And so, at what point is that break even, we're assuming a certain growth in our EAV and trying to keep our property tax level? At what point do we not, are we not able to fund the library and parks through our property tax levy? At what point do we not, are we not able to fund the library and parks through our property tax levy? So that's always an interesting schedule, which I'm, I can share if you'd like.
Sure. I'm sure it's not a fun one to look at.
Yeah, no.
Got to look at data.
Yeah.
So with that, we'll draw this portion to a close.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ross. All right. Definitely get started off in G.
She is.
Yeah.
What are we going to be able to invest in then, huh?
There's, there's a lot of restrictions.
Definitely is going to kick off the next one here, so we'll wait.
Countries that had businesses that were dealing with, I mean, for kids.
The air conditioner shooting out in this country.
It's all the bonds.
They foundation.
Until they're out and the alarm system.
I have a stock that I personally bought this up.
I'm on the floor. Air conditioning people. Vermont. So I apologize, but. Oh, yeah. Lot of paper there, Stephanie. You got a lot of paper.
Right on schedule. Okay, so our next topic tonight in the study session is council pay and expenditures. So some of the topics that we'll be talking about tonight include the ordinance that outlines council pay. We'll look at the budgets as the city of Rock Island manages the mayor and ward budgets. We'll talk briefly about city policies and procedures generally over our expenditures. I will share the results of a survey that I did in June. Uh, we'll go over those results and then my, my hope is that at the end of this meeting, we'll talk about some draft policy and elements of what our internal procedures might be going forward. So the first topic, just to quickly touch on this, one of the ordinances of the city is labeled unclassified positions. And it just sets out the pay that is provided to both the mayor and councilman. Um, annually fifteen thousand for the mayor and six thousand for our, uh, councilpersons, our, our alderpersons. You can see lots of revisions over the years have been made to this ordinance. So in Rock Island, each mayor and each ward have their own department in our financial software or in our, our chart of accounts. So, for instance, in Ward Four has its own department and a kind of a set of accounts within that department. Including, uh, salary, employer taxes, um, stationary cellphone expense and our representation or other, other expenses as well. Um, a little bit of history of this particular area as it relates to council is that in two thousand fifteen, in each department of each, for each ward, there were two lines of particular professional development and representation. And they were a thousand dollars each. In fiscal two thousand sixteen, that budget of a thousand each was actually amended to two thousand each. It's, I wasn't here then, but it's my, uh, recollection or from what I've heard is that a thousand dollars for professional development wasn't enough to attend a conference, um, specifically Washington, D.C., the national, um, the NLC is, is a little bit more expensive. And even I M L can be expensive if somebody is there for multiple days. And then in two thousand seventeen, uh, that budget continued, two thousand dollars each for professional development and representation. And there was a budget, uh, transfer combining those into one account, um, called representation.
Do we know why? I don't think any of us sitting up here today, Ivory might have, but none of us sitting up here today were here for that. That was before.
When it was combined to four thousand, we were all here, not all, but.
Yeah, and that was with the last election.
That was just a staff. Uh, it was easier from an accounting standpoint because we're constantly, is this professional development or is it representation? Because a lot of the conferences blur the line. So it's just easier, rather than do all these budget transfers back and forth, to just have one line item.
Okay.
And perhaps it should be a line item called something besides representation.
Sure. No problem. I just didn't recall.
Yep, that's always an option. Um, just a side note, part of our policies when it comes to budgets is we do allow internal transfers within a fund. Um, and those happen daily. You know, I approved four of them today. So that, um, is a, a frequent occurrence. Um, as to, to adjust budgets to, uh, follow where the expenditures are. We don't want people coding, you know, something in one account line to another, just because they don't have enough budget authority there. We want to be consistent in how we code expenditures. So in eighteen and nineteen, it was the same. So we were at that four thousand dollars representation. Um, financial activity occurs in different ways in our, in our budgets. You know, one is checks, you know, uh, each department has their person that puts in invoices into our system for payment with appropriate backup. Um, in addition, purchase cards are widely used throughout the city. We have about fifty to seventy thousand dollars in purchase card activity every month. Um, and sometimes for a council, that was council, uh, use of their purchase card. And sometimes it might be someone else, um, doing something for them and coding it to that department wherever it belongs. So city policies and procedures, we have different, um, lots of different things that we have to adhere to. But for one, um, federal guidelines, IRS guidelines provide us, uh, recommendations and guid- guidance and how to process, uh, different expenditures and wages. There's quite a few different ones. Fifteen A, publication fifteen A is an employer tax guide. Fifteen B is taxable fringe benefits. Publication four sixty-three outlines travel, entertainment, gift and car expenses. And then there's a couple of, of publications that are related just to local government. State has various statutes for Open Meetings Act, FOIA, ethics. Um, and then within the constitution, they're actually early in the constitution. There lies a statement about what public funds can be used for and that, that they have to be for a public purpose. Local guidelines, we do have, uh, city ordinance, um, for our purchasing policy. Um, in addition, we have a travel and business expense policy, ethical standards, which is an ordinance and, uh, purchase card. I would also add that we have a myriad of, of documentation for procedures and how we do things, internal operations, instructions, et cetera, too. So, survey. So in June, um, sent out a survey, seven questions to ten different municipalities. Eight of them responded only, or yeah, eight of them responded only Dixon and Peoria. Sorry. Um, again, seven questions were asked and, uh, related to credit cards and elected officials' budgets and pay, um, in addition to their participation in, um, uh, the pension fund and health insurance. So to highlight some of the results, um, each of those eight municipalities that responded do have, uh, purchase cards or credit card program for, um, uh, employees and elected officials, or mostly employees making purchases. Um, it is a very efficient way to make purchases rather than having a lot of checks entered. Um, of those eight, only one issued cards to all of their elected officials. And four issued them to select officials, usually the mayor. The budgets and types of expenditures that, um, they allowed for varied, and I can read them. Um, but most do not have individual budgets. So I described early on that we have, you know, each ward has their own set of budgets. Most do not. But, uh, and the, and so with that, a line item is shared by all elected officials. So they would have one line item for all elected officials to share for travel and conferences and such. Most common types of expenditures were travel, meetings and conferences. And no municipality has a policy specific to council expenditures. So not to say that they don't have internal guidelines in which they manage them, but no official documentation that they, that they could share. So with that, does anybody have any questions at this point about the survey in particular? Okay.
What about nonprofits?
I'm sorry?
What about nonprofits?
What about them?
Donating to nonprofits was an issue brought up in the press. What are our neighboring communities', uh, policies or whatever related to nonprofit donations?
So I would say, based on the survey results that I got, nonprofits or donations were not part of their expenditures with one exception. And that exception would be Davenport. Davenport has, um, a, uh, basically a five thousand dollar allowance, if I recall, for each, for each council member. And they have eleven, actually. So fifty-five thousand dollars budgeted for donations. Um, and I believe there was one other one that did have a pool in which, uh, council people could decide and, and make donations. And within their, their one budget item. Any other questions about that?
Just sort of clarification about the nonprofit question. If you're donating money through a nonprofit for a specific program in the city, but the money doesn't go to the nonprofit itself, is there a differentiation between the two?
I'm not sure.
Can I give an example?
Sure.
Let's say there's a nonprofit initiated city cleanup for a neighborhood or a certain corridor in the city. And an alderman donates drinking water and ice for the volunteers who are citizens of the city for the event that's sponsored by the nonprofit. Is that permitted?
I would say that there's not a non-permission of that. And I think that's part of our role here tonight is to talk about what we want to do going forward.
Thank you.
And part of me, while I do write some notes to help remember what we talk about tonight. So. Next, I would like to, uh, take the opportunity to discuss how Rock Island would like to manage our council budgets going forward. Um, we have had some media reports regarding our, uh, council expenditures. And I do know, and will acknowledge that council has different opinions on what we should and shouldn't do or what we might want to have as part of our plan and our budget going forward. My goal tonight is to lead a discussion on the elements of what our policies might be going forward. So I will take some notes. The topics or the category areas would include the ones you see above, and that's purchase card, discretionary spending and travel expenses. When I say purchase card, it's whether we have purchase cards for council or not, or, you know, some other arrangement. Under discretionary spending, we'll talk about donations, newsletter, clothing, local travel, meals, local travel vehicle expenses and out-of-town travel. And we can talk about other things like neighborhood meetings, budget transfers, et cetera. Um, so hopefully that'll help guide. I will take notes. Um, I know the mayor and Randy might, might jump in and, and help with the discussion as well. So with that, um, talking about a purchase card, you know, what are the thoughts on whether council should have purchase cards issued to them?
How, so a purchase card is really convenient when you are buying pizza for your ward meeting, right? I can go to, uh, you know, the local pizza shop here in Rock Island and buy five pizzas for my ward meeting with the card. It's, it's easy, right? If we don't have those cards, how does the ci- city facilitate that purchase? Do we send them a check?
Yes, and so not all employees do have purchase cards. And there are, um, times when expenditures need to be reimbursed. We do have weekly accounts payable runs, which is nice. Um, as long as paperwork is turned in by Tuesday morning, we can have a check issued that Thursday or direct deposited to that person's account, reimbursing them for the expenditures.
So it's a check to the employee who made the purchase on their own personal money and then are being reimbursed?
Yes.
But we don't send a check to the vendor or something like that?
We can do that, too. That would be another option for sure.
I don't know how you could buy a pizza and say, hey, a check's in the mail, you know? I don't think that would work.
If it's a Rock Island business, I'd like to think that they would.
I think in that inter- instance, I've done it before, you can contact the vendor ahead of time and say, hey, I would like to order five pizzas. Can you bill the city for it? And I would imagine nine times out of ten, if they're a reputable business, they would do that. So you wouldn't have to out, outlay it yourself, um, but you could set up that prepayment.
And the city clerk or someone in general administration would possibly be able to make a payment over the phone with the credit, with their credit card.
So the city clerk can have a credit card, but the alderman can't?
I'm not saying that.
Right. That would be my point.
Probably the credit card is, is that the money is then already spent. So you have a situation like we have now is you're looking for, if it's not an appropriate expenditure,
Right.
getting that money back or, you know, what do you do? And that's, uh, so it adds a lot of paperwork and confusion if, and so.
And I think my, my opinion, and I'll be honest, I'm anti-purchase cards. I don't think we should have them. I think it sets up, um, irresponsible spending. But I think, you know, if you don't have a, if you have a credit card, you know, just like people who get in trouble with their card, it's really easy to take out that card and just on a whim, put expenses on there. You know, like I'm cleanup, I want to put pizza on it, cleanup, I want to put water on it. It's really easy to do that. But if you have to pay that money first or make arrangements to have that purchase made ahead of time, it kind of drives more mindful spending and it's not as easy to just take out your credit card and charge it. And I, I mean, I do understand that for conferences, it does make it a little bit challenging and, and difficult if you're at a conference, you know, like in D.C. or someplace and you've, you've got dinners and they're pricey, you know? And so I do acknowledge that, but I think, to be very honest, I, I think most of the spending to be mindful spending and planned out ahead of time, and it can be set up to be either vendor paid or you pay it on your own. And then in all honesty, you're going to think twice about doing it if you're outlaying the cash first.
Sure. And another option that pops into my mind, and know that when I chime in, I'm not saying one way, you know, or the other. Um, but, uh, one thing could be is to have a card issued because once it's issued, you know, it's, it's hard to keep canceling it and reissuing. There is a time period, but, um, it could be held at city hall, you know, either in the mayor's office or in the finance department. In fact, that there's some, um, council members that do keep their, and have historically kept their card in, in, uh, finance. There's a secret spot. Won't tell you.
Oh, so there are, there are council members who carry their card with them all the time?
There are some that do and some that don't. Yep. Okay, so let's keep moving on. We can always come back to the subject. So under discretionary spending, let's talk about donations, newsletter and clothing for the next three. We'll start with donations. So, um, you know, some options are yes donations, no donations, yes, but limit. Um, and another option that's been thrown out is an amount allocated. And another option that's been thrown out is an amount allocated to council to have a group approval process to make donations to local efforts. Any thoughts?
I think as Alderman Sprigatus was getting at, we need to make a distinction between just donating money to a nonprofit because we support their cause or something like that and facilitating a public use by, you know, making the contribution to the nonprofit. It was, you know, you mentioned media attention. You know, it was reported that I donated money to the Broadway Historic District Association and the Friends of Haverberg Civic Center. Those weren't just, here's 300 bucks because I like your organization. The Broadway donation was to purchase the historic street signs that were praised in the newspaper. And the Friends of Haverberg was for poinsettias for the Winter in Bloom event. And Haverberg is a municipal property, let's recall. And so I guess we need to make the distinction. I would agree that just donating money to, you know, Doctors Without Borders is a bad idea. I don't know how that serves the public good for the citizens of Rock Island. But if we are trying to support a public good by saying, hey, I can chip in 300 bucks here to support buying street signs for the neighborhood that I represent, can we distinguish between the two?
And, you know, I think that's, the paper also lifted up donations to Dankman. It wasn't to buy any votes. They've been trying to raise money for a new playground for years. That school is used by plenty of residents within the Seventh Ward. There is no other park other than Saki. There is some leftover funding and to help them achieve their goal, the same thing that we would allocate CIP budget for John Grip to renovate one of the parks in one of the other wards. So we don't make the distinction. And actually, I, approval from you. You sent me the paperwork to figure out, to have them verify they're a nonprofit. There was no policy against it, which we're discussing tonight. I think as alderpeople, we're represented to our wards. If they have a problem with a donation, having a park in the Seventh Ward, they get to do that every four years to vote, you know, if they really disagree with that. I think we are given a power to make those decisions. And Lord help us if we can make the decision if it's just general operating or for a specific purpose. Unfortunately, the media didn't really lift out the thoughtful and the mindful process that some of us have spent to use those funds in a good way that really benefit our ward or our city.
I'd like to interject a little bit here. You talked about, again, not to create a negative and not to create a divisive environment. However, you said there's leftover money. And I don't feel that if there's leftover money, it doesn't mean that we should go spend every last penny we have. And I also think, again, all due respect, I do believe that the amounts of money that were just being taught, I don't know, I say tossed out there. I mean, I'm sure they were going to great causes and that sort of thing. However, with those kind of dollar amounts, in my opinion, if those are something that someone were to feel very strongly on, then I think then the option number four would probably suffice as being an alternative, as a bring those kind of things in front of city council and give them approval of all. I just think those dollar amounts get, they get kind of high up there. And it's not a if we have leftover money type of.
Yeah, but if I wasn't leftover money, it's how much money do I have left in my account? I'd like to make a donation towards the.
That's kind of the same thing.
Well, I would have done way to tell January and done $1,000, but I didn't have $1,000 left. So I hear what you're saying, but I just, do we want, do we want council to micromanage what people elected us to do for a dollar amount that's allocated to us?
I think it's.
But I'm sure the citizens don't like the fact that considering these roads aren't getting done or we have potholes not getting done, that we just take upon ourselves to start throwing hundreds of dollars at.
So when $900 go to roads, for example, if an alderman had $900 left, does that money go directly to roads? Where does it happens to it?
General fund, right?
So a couple of things. One is unspent general fund dollars do stay within the general fund. And so one of the things I'm doing right now is looking at our general fund balance from 2018, looking at our fund balance, how many days of cash that we have to see what's available from last year, 2018, to support 2020. So a couple of, one other thing I wanted to mention too is that some of the donations that were made by council in the last couple of years were actually to internal departments within the city. Haverberg would be kind of a gray area. There was another donation to Haverberg for an air conditioning unit. Haverberg is ours, but, you know, it's kind of a fine line. But also supporting parks initiatives and police initiatives at the holidays and things like that. So that was done. So I do hear a couple of supporters for not micromanaging council's ability to donate to causes with, probably with some guidelines, not, you know, sending it off to, you know, another state or, you know, an organization that's not within our boundaries. And then another one that, not so wild about it, but, you know, perhaps should limit it or have a pool with kind of a group decision oversight approval, kind of transparent process. And then Alderman Swanson, you, something you wanted to say?
I think it's a perception issue. As a taxpayer, and I'm going to take off my council hat, as a taxpayer, I don't appreciate my tax dollars, which go up frequently, being used to fund charitable organizations. If the aldermen want to support a charitable organization, you get paid $6,000 a year. Use part of that money for your charitable organization. The perception is my money is going where I don't want it to go. It is not benefiting me. It is not benefiting the city. The other thing is, is it can be looked at as potential buying votes. You know, if I really want to be re-elected, boy, I'm going to pump money into Ward Four. So they really like me and think I'm doing a really great thing. And that's not the purpose of it. I mean, we all get inundated with, you know, birdies for charity. I mean, how many birdies for charity things do you get? You know, I think that if you want to donate as a charitable donation, that's what your salary's for. Do that. You know, if you want to go ahead and give water for people that are working, fine. How about that altruistic value of, hey, you guys are doing a really great job. I want to help you. I want to support you. You know, you get fundraising, you know, fundraising activities. We're fundraising from the community. We don't need to fundraise from a city that's got its own issues that we're dealing with. And I guess I just, I really just think we need to be really thoughtful about how we are spending these people's money. And I don't think donating to a charity is a good, a good way to spend my tax dollars.
I think with that perception issue is also, we as a council and the city manager, when they're talking to the department directors, it's not one of these deals that it's allocated, so go ahead and spend it. It's, hopefully there's money left over, whether it be from a HUD program, whether it be from even street repairs, whether it be from whatever department. Is that, we hope they have money left over. And so just because it's allocated, doesn't mean that they should spend it. And so I think we need to help set that example is if it's allocated, you know, to the council and myself, is that we don't spend it just because it's allocated.
I agree, and I'd like to mention a couple of things. I think most of us have been mindful in our spending. I don't think there's been a great lack of that amongst the people who are sitting up at this table today. For the last two years, out of the $4,000 ward account that I've had each year for the Third Ward, I've returned over 50% of it to the general fund. So I don't need anybody to be looking over my shoulder telling me to be mindful or what's responsible and what's not responsible. I think I'm pretty capable of that. The money that I've spent has been for the city of Rock Island. It's been spent in the city of Rock Island. And I can account for all of my expenses. All of my receipts have been turned in and detailed as requested. Now, just on the scale of things in terms of what people think about spending $20 here or $50 there or $100 there, I know it's difficult for taxpayers to look at that and think that we're misspending their money in some way. But people have to understand, we deal in millions of dollars every council meeting. This council meeting that we're having after the study session tonight, we will be acting on approving $3,571,626 and change. Now, that's not all money going out. Some of it's going out, some of it's coming in, but we have to make those decisions. And I think we're responsible in doing that. And I think we're doing a disservice to the council and to the city of Rock Island to picket this small potatoes issues. And if something's really wrong, then let's correct it. Let's work on that. But if it's not wrong and if it's working, if it's legal, if it's ethical, then let's keep going the way we've been going. Some adjustment might be, or correction might be worthy, but let's don't overreact.
And I would like to challenge that. I mean, those $20, those small potatoes, I'm sorry, they add up. They add up to thousands of dollars during the year. And I take offense to that small potatoes concept.
You're welcome.
Because they add up.
Stephanie, how many millions of dollars are pension liabilities in terms of, as something that keeps you up at night?
Like what is our total pension liability?
What percentage of our general budget is going to pension liabilities?
So over half of our property tax is our employer contribution.
And have we had a study session that has had to meet early to really struggle with, what the heck are we going to do as a city with this pension liability? Okay, thank you.
So let's go on to another topic. We might circle back to this. But we'll go on to newsletters and just kind of, that's been a topic of, not a lot of wards do do newsletters, but it's something that probably should have potentially some oversight, maybe a review of a newsletter before it goes out. We also have, I would add, a lot of opportunities anymore to communicate with our constituents through social media and other things that we do. So, you know, if we were to create an internal procedure or guideline for council expenditures, would we want to have newsletter expense be one of those allowed expenditures?
Personally, I, me personally, I think we should be allowed to have some newsletters. Again, with guidance on bulk mailing rates with standard paper, not anything elaborate. I mean, obviously limit those per year. Now, spend it maybe, you know, once or twice a year if that's something that, that, you know, not everybody has internet access to, you know, so. And maybe that you'd like to, like for me, for example, you know, just being elected, I would like to send out a letter, you know, thank you and just additional information, like how I may be reached. Those type of things, you could, I think, just a welcome or a, you know, those kind of things. But there do, there should be guidelines with that.
So you'd be okay with having a review of the newsletter before it?
Yeah.
Goes out? Any other thoughts on newsletter?
How much is bulk rate for 11,000 mailings? Isn't there about 11,000 each ward of residents?
I am an expert on a lot of things, but not on postage rates.
I think that would eat through almost $4,000, wouldn't it?
I know there's not that many people in my ward even.
Yeah, each ward is.
7,000 people? We have 50,000 in the city.
Yeah, we have 15,000 units that we build.
38,000 in the city.
I think it's humorous that for a council who repeatedly makes some of our goals, increased communication with citizens, you know, connecting with residents, et cetera, we are sitting here and considering banning aldermen from contacting their constituents.
I don't think that was what he was saying.
Who says to ban it?
I understand that. I'm exaggerating here for the purpose of, I think Alderman Sprigatus's comments about the sensationalizing of what has been reasonably good policy. Yes, one alderman made the front page, again, for inappropriate spending, which this council has taken action on, right? And I don't think any of us up here are opposed to making sure that we have good guidelines. But the political circus that this issue has become, I take objection to. I do not appreciate people who, I try sincerely to work with all of you in a very respectful and positive rapport. You know, when you, when all of you were first elected, I reached out to you and said, hey, let's sit down, let's have coffee. Let's talk about the upcoming goal-setting session. What are your priorities? What can we work on together? And in response, I've gotten lambasted in the media for being a corrupt Chicago politician. I just, that, I understand the concern and I appreciate your dedication to conserving taxpayer dollars. But let's have this conversation framed in such a way that is actually for the benefit of the citizens of Rock Island and not, you know, what type of limelight can we get from the media in the back? I mean, newsletters, yes, they are a good thing to have for aldermen who choose to use them. I've never used them because I use nextdoor.com and Facebook, right? I mean, that's, it's free. But there are some aldermen who don't have a Facebook account. Or there are some people, like Alderman Hurt says, who don't have the internet. So if that's how you wish to communicate with your constituents, so be it. Yes, we can have some limits on prohibiting glossy paper, whatever. It's fine, but let's just make sure that we are framing this conversation in how can we effectively represent our constituents? I've had the vast majority of people that have contacted me after this media reporting has been, I support how you've spent your expenditures. I support your assistance in getting new street signs. I support your assistance in making sure that we had poinsettias for the Winter in Bloom event. I, you know, let's just make sure that we are mindful of what's, how can we represent dutifully our constituents and not hamstring ourselves for somebody's political benefit?
And I think what I'm trying to do is stop the circus. I want to stop the merry-go-round. I don't want to be over the fold on the front page of the paper anymore. What I'm trying to do is, with Stephanie's help, as she's guiding this conversation, is we are talking about putting limits on in an effort to stop the circus. And I don't think anybody up here is trying to be divisive or nitpicky. As new aldermen, we're kind of tired, I'm kind of tired of being lumped in to the circus, and I want to stop it.
I don't, Dave, I know you were speaking. I don't think that it's just the press and everything else. This is, I've gotten more emails and letters type deal about this topic than I have anything else that's ever come in from council in the last two years. And so whether call it perception or call it whatever, you know, what you want, if it's reality or perception, the citizens perceive it and it is wrong. Is what was some of the things that have happened are not good policy and that should be changed and should be policed. And so we should do it even if it's perception versus a reality. We, everybody's intention is great. I think everybody, not one person that I know, even in the old, the people that just left. I think their intentions were very well-intended. It was just, because people will take and blow it up and say, once again, if it's there, is it someplace else? And so we need to work on changing that perception, some reality, some perception, even if it's micromanaging.
Stephanie, in reviewing your, the outline you put together, I think just on the, you're talking about reviewing of newsletters. At least the part that I took away from it, you had mentioned, you know, the election laws. And I'm guessing that a good portion of what you're talking about isn't what, how often you send them out, but it's content-related, I would think. Is that fair to say?
Yeah, so one of the reasons why I mentioned having it reviewed.
Right, okay, because I mean, because you mentioned that in your outline, and I just think that that's important to know that we can't, we have to make sure that the content comports with election laws so that there's no thought that it's being used to, for me to support myself or someone else, or so.
Right. Can't have Vote Dylan Parker on your city-funded newsletter. That's not allowed.
Okay, so we have about 20 minutes, and we know I like to be on time, so let's keep moving. So clothing. So we can allow clothing purchases, not allow them, have them with limits. We do have to keep in mind taxable fringe benefit reporting. So accounting does review that. Any thoughts one way or another?
Personally, I don't think that clothing should be allowed. I purchased shirts, I'll be the first to say that. And I actually have one being embroidered as we sit here and talk. And I paid for it with something they called cash. I use that cash. But, I mean, that's just my personal feeling. I can't speak for the others here. And whether it's right for them or not, it is not for me to decide. I have to speak what is right for Mark.
Sure. Anybody else?
And I could say for my employer, my other employer, if I wish to buy logoed clothing, I pay for it myself. I'm a Quad City Chamber ambassador. I pay for my shirt myself. I'm a Quad City Chamber Ambassador. I pay for my shirt myself. I'm a John Deere Classic Volunteer. Pay for my shirt myself. A Rock Island City shirt is not a uniform that I have to wear, and if I choose to get one, then I will pay for it myself.
Anybody else?
My employer pays for my employer-embroidered shirts. I think, again, it depends on what do we want to present to the public. When I go to official Rock Island events, I like to have an official Rock Island logoed shirt. I think it presents a good image for our city, that we're professional, that we are here, not just Dylan showing up in a button-up shirt, right? And as such, I've made the recommendation that the way that my other employer operates is that once a year, you get a pick through the catalog, if you want a long sleeve, short sleeve, whatever, and they provide you one article of clothing with the company logo on it, and that's it. So, I would be fine with something to that effect at the beginning of your term or every year, whatever the case may be. An alderman can pick out one shirt or jacket, whatever, with the official logo, and then prohibit, you know, buying a bunch of shirts from online vendors or whatever else, so.
Anybody else?
Go ahead, Dave.
I think I'd take Alderman or Alderwoman Swanson's approach. Then we just open up a whole can of worms of, well, it was a Lands' End purchase or it was a purchase from, you know, goodwill that was brought to an embroidery shop. I think it can be, every alderperson has their own ability to find a way to, if they would like to represent the city. So, I don't think we need to cover those expenses anymore.
Well, you know, just like I have defended purchase cards, I think it is mindful to not prohibit working people or poor people, whatever you want to phrase it, from actively participating in their local government, right? So, not everybody has a credit card. So, not everybody has a bank account that they can front a hundred dollars for water, or whatever the case may be. I've opposed policies that require alderpeople to put up money and be reimbursed because then you're basically saying that only people with money that can afford to do this stuff can effectively do it, which is not, it's not in the Constitution that you have to have money to participate in your government, right? So, to that effect, I think a good compromise would be, you can have one shirt. That's it.
Yes, you do get paid, and so, you can use the money, the stipend that we get paid to purchase those also.
Yes, and I believe I'm the only alderman up here that spent an entire year's worth of salary, all six thousand dollars, on donating to nonprofits.
But it's your choice, and so, they have to do a donation, they can do shirts or whatever, so.
Correct.
And you can always get, I mean, we're not an elitist society. You can always get a cash advance if you need to purchase something that you don't have the cash for.
Sure.
And that, you know, so, I'm gonna kind of hijack your thing because we are running out of time. One of the things that has bothered me a little bit is, so, with the purchase cards, they come through monthly, the last meeting of the month for us to approve, so we can kind of see what was purchased months ago, paid months ago. So, if we just allow anything, the only way to get that money back is to ask for reimbursement via a letter from our attorney. I did find out when I asked about, well, if we go ahead and limit purchase cards to out-of-town travel only and conferences and everything else is a reimbursable expense, could we then approve those reimbursable expenses at every council meeting? And I was told we would never see those reimbursable expenses. So, my concern is those reimbursable expenses will be driven underground, and we will never see what they are, we will never see what anybody is doing. And, you know, I guess my question to you is, I'm assuming that if I were a city employee and I wished to be reimbursed for money I spent, that I would need to attach my receipt, attach it to a reimbursement form, and it would need to be approved by someone, correct?
Correct.
My supervisor. Right. So, as a council, my supervisor is the citizens of Rock Island. Now, I can't expect several thousand people to approve all of my expenses, nor those of the council. However, the citizens of Rock Island voted to elect seven people to hold their proxy vote for approving things. And I hold the proxy vote for all the residents of Ward Four. And so, as a citizen, I should be allowed to approve my employees' expenses. So, I guess my question is, is if we go to reimbursable expenses, can things be done in a way that all the expenses for the aldermen come to city council each meeting, so no one's ever out of pocket more than two weeks for money? But can they come to city council so we can approve those reimbursements prior to the reimbursement being made? Which is gonna save money because then our attorney doesn't have to write a letter to ask you to reimburse it, and therefore, you're not processing something that's not going to be reimbursed. So, that was an eye-opener to me, is that I don't want, I don't want spending driven underground. I want transparency and accountability.
So, I'm not sure where you heard that from, but it's probably just not part of our current practices is that we do, you know, you're reviewing expenditures after they happen. You know, is when you get the AP report every week or payroll, it's, you know, it's for past, for past purchases. We certainly can make changes if that's what council desires and accumulate requests and have it be put forth. It's just not how, you know, how we normally pay our bills. But that certainly could be an option if that's something that you wanted to do. You know, one thing you mentioned, you know, is the going after, you know, getting reimbursed for a purchase after the fact. You know, it is harder with elected officials because you can't be fired. But if one of my employees has an improper expenditure and they don't reimburse that expenditure when requested, we have that opportunity to have disciplinary action and proceedings and work with HR. So, we can't do that for you guys. So, it makes for a different flavor of administration of the purchase card process. Another option, and there are so many things, you know, that we can do, but another option would be to share with all of council the packet that's assembled by the executive assistant, you know, with city clerk, all your expenditures go to the city clerk. The executive assistant in general administration is the one that compiles all of the purchase card statements. They're all coded within the JP Morgan site, as far as like what account they go to. And then, we have a drop-off folder on our, on our network where those statements are left. And that's, you know, when we need to pull documentation, that's where it is. So, that compilation of all of your purchase card statements could be shared via email or as a council agenda item, you know, so that there is transparency across, across you all, so. So, with that, time check, six twenty, right? I can't see the clock behind me. Is that where we're at? Okay. We want to keep talking about some other topics? Not really, but we'll keep going, you know, just to get through this process. So, local travel. We have local travel meals to talk about first. So, yes, do we allow local meals? No. Yes, but limit, you know, who are we eating with? That, et cetera, et cetera. Any thoughts one way or another about?
I think travel within a twenty-five mile radius should, are not, I don't feel they should be reimbursable expenses, I believe, outside of twenty-five miles. Then turn in your, get your odometer statement, your odometer readings, and you turn them in on a reimbursable sheet, and then get reimbursed for those type of travel expenses. As far as the meals go, I personally think that one-on-one meals with, obviously, our own alderpeople should be disallowed. I think, you know, there should be, if you're having a meal with somebody that you're doing city business with or you're, you know, you're meeting with somebody, maybe another city, or, you know, I think those are things that, you know, we should be able to discuss and keep that as an open proposition. As far as out-of-town stuff, I say just leave it as is.
Okay, got all three in there. Good way to handle it. Anybody else?
I'm curious as to why, why would you delineate between discussing city business and allowing that with a developer or something like that as opposed to another alderperson? I understand the optics.
No, I'm saying you and I going out, there's no reason that we should be buying each other's meals after a city council meeting. I'm talking if you're having a meeting with another count, like Moline or East Moline or something. There's a difference. I mean...
I understand, but there are legitimate reasons for me and you to go out to lunch and discuss an upcoming issue or some, like I said, when I reached out to you and asked if you wanted to meet and discuss the upcoming goal-setting session. I mean...
In my opinion, we're gonna eat regardless. I'm gonna go have lunch. So, I don't feel like I have to, this is, again, this is me, I don't feel like I should have to put that on a card. If I'm gonna go eat lunch either with you or I'm gonna eat lunch by myself, either way, I'm gonna pay for my own lunch.
And I guess my question is, why should we, why should a taxpayer pay for your lunch?
Because I'm conducting city business.
Do you have to conduct it at lunch?
No, but if a developer wants to have lunch with me and says, hey, let's have lunch at eleven o'clock.
If you're meeting with a developer, you should have Chandler there, and I'm sure he's got a city budget for that.
No. I can invite Chandler if I want, but there are some times that alderpeople have conversations with people in the public, developer, community member, whatever. I mean, we need, I do not understand the objection to allowing alderpeople who would otherwise, I would have no reason to go to lunch on day whatever, except for the fact that somebody reached out to me and said, hey, can we have lunch? And I said, sure, let's do it on Friday. I don't budget, in my household budget, for a random lunch at a stranger's request in my household budget.
Of course, then you can say, no, I won't do lunch, I'll do it at ten or whatever.
So, now, we're giving the perception to the public of, I'll meet with you beyond your terms.
Dylan, why should people buy your lunch?
I, because...
That's what I don't understand.
I understand that you don't understand.
I mean, you're getting paid six thousand dollars. Can you not pay for your lunch out of that?
I am conducting city business. That's why.
And, you know, I conduct city business for coffee, and I foot the bill for those two five-dollar cups of coffee. Or I will conduct city business by walking around Schwibert Park. I personally would never conduct city business at a meal because, one, I'm not gonna talk with my mouth full, nor am I gonna put the other person in an awkward situation by asking them a question, and they're trying to talk to me while they're trying to eat. I mean, that, to me, lunch meetings, meal meetings are ridiculous.
Okay. Thank you.
Stephanie, I'd like to say a word or two.
Of course.
I suppose there are different scenarios with regards to meals and discussing city business. A couple of the meetings that I go to for the city of Rock Island as an alderman are lunchtime meetings, and there's a fee. I don't have a choice in that matter. I don't feel like I should have to pay my, out of my personal pocket money to conduct business for the city of Rock Island, even though I make a whopping six thousand dollars a year. It should come as a business expense. And none of the meals that I have to pay for, either voluntarily or because of it's a meeting I am going to, a monthly meeting, are expensive, generally ten to twelve dollars. Now, the alderman's salary has been the same six thousand dollars for twenty-four years. It was, it was raised to six thousand in nineteen ninety-five, and it's never been raised since. I Googled what gasoline cost in nineteen ninety-five in Rock Island, and I couldn't believe what I saw, but it said it was a dollar fifteen a gallon. That hardly seems realistic, but apparently, that's what it was. Today, it's two seventy-eight or two seventy-nine somewhere. So, that same six thousand dollar salary is having to pay a lot more to put gas in my tank or food in my stomach, and I have to have regular meals and take regular medication. So, I, I sometimes make arrangements to meet with aldermen or with the city manager or with the mayor to discuss city business. And I don't think it's too much to ask. That comes out of my ward account. That four thousand dollars that I only, I spend less than two thousand of. So, that's where I am.
Of course, that ward, that ward account's not your money, it's the taxpayer's money that's budgeted at this point in your ward.
It's budgeted for me at my discretion to decide how to spend it, and I've done a darn good job doing it. Now, I disagree with Alderman Hurt a little bit about the mileage being, having a twenty-five mile radius. Whether you're in town, whether you're driving at Moline or East Moline for events or meetings that they hold that we're invited to, like roundtable discussions or any of those things, the car still burns the same amount of gasoline whether you're within a twenty-five mile radius or without. So, I have to disagree with that. I think it should be reimbursable.
You know, real quick, to simplify things, and I'm not, we watch time here, but, you know, if you wanted to summarize a lot of this up, and this is where, Dylan, you talked about we're micromanaging and we're dealing with the precedent, it's a circus-type deal. If you notice, a lot of the other cities in that survey, a lot of the cities, there is no reimbursable deals. It's anything, it's out of town, travel, and travel outside of town, end of sentence, end of sentence. There may be, may or may not be a purchase card that they can use for that out of town, but the two thousand dollar discretionary, in my opinion, should go away. Should be not, there should not be two thousand dollar discretionary. Two thousand dollar travel, give or take, is what's out there. And that simplifies this matter dramatically. And what other few expenses or might, things that may come up can either be brought up here as a council or can be brought up as a, as a case-by-case situation, whether then approaching the city manager or approaching Stephanie in finance. One of those three options on a case-by-case of, do we buy a trophy? Do we buy an advertising in the Martin Luther King program for that day, whatever it is? Is we handle those case-by-case or put them on the agenda? Other than that, the ward discretionary is gone. Discretionary deal's gone. There's just, there's nothing that's reimbursable.
Mayor, could I bring something up?
Yes.
Back to the local travel again, and I just don't mean to drive this into the ground, but I'm just, I am gonna drive home the point. So, there's been, there's been, I wouldn't say there's a lot, there's been a few gas card, gas purchases. I know at least notable on the last purchase card review that we've done. When those tanks of gas are being filled up, then you have to make the assumption that these people that are buying this gas must also have a second car that they do their personal business in. Because you can't tell me that, say, they put forty dollars in gas, where's the documentation of an odometer when you filled it up, when you ended it? Who did you meet with? When did you meet? And what did you discuss, which are IRS guidelines? So, just a random, I'm gonna fill my tank up with gas, does not, that doesn't fly. At least with me, it does not fly, because just like anything else, you have to have a purpose. And if that stuff isn't documented, then show me why that should be counted as a city expense.
I mean, there are apps out there for contractors that use the mileage that they drive for a business expense, right? If we want to require that, that's fine. I, I mean, yeah, filling up your tank and saying it's city business, that's questionable. Every single meal that I have with a business owner, I write on the receipt, as you're supposed to, who I met with and what was discussed. I understand that there is the potential for, yeah, I'm going out to lunch with a constituent over here, ha, 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 you know? But when you have proper documentation and you have proper accountability with that respect, that doesn't happen. And that's why on every single receipt that I have, I say who I got to lunch with and what we talked about. And I'm perfectly fine with requiring that. To say, again, I don't want us to overreact because of a perceived, you know, poor behavior or something. Overreacting to me is ignoring all of the good that the representation funds have provided the citizens of Rock Island because we, what, we feel that we've gotten a couple of letters? We get a couple of letters every time we approve a budget, but we still make the hard decision that's bad, you know, that is ultimately for the benefit of the citizens of Rock Island, even though, yeah, somebody called me and said, don't raise my taxes. We see the bigger picture and understand that this is for the benefit of everybody. That's why we do it. I don't want us to overreact because of the poor behavior of one person, and the rest of us have been doing a good job in representing our communities. So, let's tighten up the rules a little bit, but let's not overreact.
I agree with Mayor Toms on restricting it to two thousand dollars for conferences only. And I think, too, we should look at the conferences, and identify which ones are beneficial. Who goes to them? Should the same person go to the same conference, year in and year out? And if you go to a conference, and not everybody's going, then I think you should provide a presentation at a study session, so the rest of us can benefit from the information and knowledge you gained there.
We used to do that, a little bit. We used to during the other business section, if anybody went on a conference, yeah. Yeah, I went to the IML so-and-so. Give a little spiel about what you learned. I mean, you know, how many times have we received complaints about vacant buildings in Rock Island? Include, you know, everybody here, or not if everybody here, but most people up here said at this most recent goal-setting session a few weeks ago, that addressing vacant buildings in Rock Island was a priority. When I went to the IML conference two years ago, I think it was, I went to a section on what to do about vacant properties in your city, right? And that's what started the conversation that we continue to have today about our vacant property registry, and our absentee landlord ordinance. Like, that's an example of, these things have provided material benefits for the citizens of Rock Island. Don't overreact, and then, you know, not give us the resources to move our city forward.
I don't think that that was the intent. I think it was the, the intent to limit the expenditures to what was pre-approved by council. And I think that if there is an expenditure, we've discussed, we have events in our wards that are coming up. Those don't come up overnight. We're, we're supposed to be thoughtful people that can plan ahead. And if we see an expense that's gonna come up, like I'm gonna have a cleanup in my ward, I'm going to do something that for a holiday event, I want to donate some money for an event that, that the city already supports. There is something like that that can be pre-discussed, pre-approved, and very transparent. People don't have to say, well, why did they do that? We did it, we did it in public, we did, we said why we did it, and we move on.
Once again, a lot of people, you talk about making a mountain on Mulholland, again, once again, people didn't realize, a lot of citizens didn't realize these expenditure, the, the budget-wise, was even out there, let alone the issues that we were spending it on. Is that even that that dollar amount was out there and available. And so, that, I think, was, a lot of people were taken back by. Even though it was out there in the internet to be able to see, and it's still, you got to dig deep to see it, and really look at things.
I'm sure that they would, I mean, there's all sorts of details that we have to process, and that's why we are elected to do that.
We need to work on summarizing, I don't want to take over, we need to work on kind of getting a summarization, and so, staff has an idea of what to draft, or what to change, based on some of those will also. And maybe Stephanie's taking good notes, and has read a lot of that into the, the group. But, eh, one thing that hasn't been discussed, real quick, is who's making that, those final decisions on whether it's acceptable or not acceptable? Is the city manager? Is it the mayor? Is it finance? Is it, who, who do we feel comfortable, the one making those decisions, whether expenditures are acceptable or not?
If I may, Mayor?
You may.
I think Alderman Swanson said that we each carry the votes for the people in our wards. So, if it is an expenditure that is brought before the council, then we are expressing those votes, and we don't have to put the city manager or staff in a position where they're disapproving something that their bosses, literally their bosses have, have approved. And it's, and then it would be upon us, in an open session, we hold ourselves accountable. We hold our own feet to the fire. And then we need to be adult about it when the answer's no.
How does that work? I had a business owner contact me today and say, hey, can we go to lunch on Friday? How does that work, logistically, today?
Well, you can go to lunch, and you can each buy your own lunch.
Yes, I understand that that is your position. For those, I mean, do we have the majority of people that say, you can't use the representation fund for meals with the public?
I'm hearing a majority of people are saying that.
Raise of hands?
That are saying what? You cannot do it?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm saying, you cannot do it?
I think that's.
What? The alderman, the alderman can speak for himself.
I mean, I had lunch, I had coffee with someone this morning, and you were aware of it. In fact, it was somebody in your ward, so I could charge it to your account, but.
Feel free.
The, the point is.
I don't think that we have consensus. I don't think that we have consensus.
Went around the room, and if, if you want to do it, that's fine. I think you do.
We also have one alderman who can't be here today, tonight.
Right, we still have to move on forward.
So, I think, to wrap it up, is I will take the notes from tonight, and from the discussion, and, and put forth a guide that can be used going forward, and I think this will be a useful tool for future council. It's often a question we get, how does it work? Where do I turn my receipts into? What can I spend it on? And I do think that there will be some give and take, and some compromise, you know, in the policy. And then I think it's also a personal decision on what you spend your money on. You know, for instance, I can, you know, use my, my city purchase card to take Heath Merlack out to, out to dinner tonight, if I wanted. Although we pay him a lot of money, he should be taking me out to dinner, as long as it doesn't violate the Gift Ban Act. But, with that in mind, I, it would be my personal choice that I would just, you know, buy us dinner and drinks, and that would be it. But, so I do think some of it's personal choice, but probably some guidelines, you know, some limits in there. And we can use it as a guide, and it can be changed going forward. And I think we do a really good job at being fairly transparent in this city. We talk about things publicly. We had an hour-plus discussion tonight on a difficult subject, and I think it was good, and will continue to do so. And if we need to make some changes in how we are transparent, we can do that. And so, I think there were some really good points tonight.
Can I add, one last, to me, clarification, whatever document we end up with, and a policy, and then we potentially, let maybe look at a resolution adopting that policy. But, what that policy, how it reads, or else, should be on what is acceptable, and not list all the things that are not acceptable. And so, by default, if you don't see it on that document, that means it's not acceptable. And so, instead of, sitting there saying, well, it's not on there, so that means it, it's okay. And that's where sometimes, I might see anybody in the room, but I've seen that in the past, and, and experienced. Instead of saying, well, it's not on there, it says, like, it doesn't say I can't, so that must mean I can. And I think this, in this case, the document should read, here's what you can do. If it's not on there, that means it's not acceptable.
Thank you.
Very much.
We have three minutes, but we don't want to call it right to the last minute here either. People may have to take a break. All right, we're done.